The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, and let the role reflect that a majority of the council members are present with the absence of Councilmember Fults and Councilmember Leifeld. This evening, we are here to recognize recent employee promotions and new hires. Ryan, would you like to step forward?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. First, I'd like to call Joel Spagnuelletti up. Going to make you come right up here. Joel Spagnuelletti, we call him Spags, started with the city in 2013. He came from a utility contractor and brought real hands-on operator experience to the Public Works Department. Joel quickly took on every challenge that presented itself and broadened his experience and knowledge base. Joel moved up to the Public Works Supervisor role in 2021 based on his proven competencies and natural leadership abilities. Tonight, we recognize Joel for another promotion, yet again, to the Public Works Superintendent and my new right-hand man in operations. Joel was mentored into this role and was a unanimous choice for the department or from the department. Joel comes to work every day with a positive attitude, a sense of efficiency, constant and continuous improvement, and empowers others to be their best, which the science of a true team leader. He is my policy creator and my policy follower. Joel lives nice and close, just outside of town, with his wife Alicia, his son Nicky, his daughter Ally, and his dog Bodie. He enjoys hunting out west, fishing, and is a diehard Bucks Brewers, Packers, and Badgers fan. I'll give him the Badgers because that's my alma mater. That's it. But you'll find this if you ever stop by his new office with all his decor. Congratulations, Joel.
Thanks, Ryan.
Matt Lindemann, please step up. Matt Lindemann started with the city in 2006 as an LEO, or as we call it in Public Works, a light equipment operator. Soon after, Matt took on a big interest in learning the utility side of the house. He cross-trained for many years, transitioning into our first official Public Works operator. After the transition, Matt spent the next decade as one of our main utility operators. His specialty was everything sanitary sewer. From jetting and lift stations to televising and documenting all of our sewer work, Matt has been the go-to for Public Works and engineering. Matt also has been one of our lead trainers. He has the gift of patience and ability to explain complex utility issues to new employees and residents alike. In February of 2023, Matt was promoted to Public Works Supervisor, where he continues to support our operators with the same patience and empathy he did before. When not at work, Matt enjoys spending time with his wife Mandy and two boys, Aiden and Leighton. Matt stays busy with Leighton in hockey and Aiden in hockey, baseball, and band. And I know how that hockey parent goes, so congratulations, Matt. And finally, Jake isn't with us tonight, but Jake Gartske is one of our new hires. On March 1st, 2023, we welcomed Jake Gartske as our newest Public Works operator. Jake is a lifelong resident of Hastings. He attended Hastings High School and the University of Minnesota Duluth. Jake brings with him an immense amount of heavy equipment operating experience and is no stranger to snow removal operations, which we definitely need. He also has an extensive knowledge in water and sewer construction. In his spare time, he enjoys skiing the slopes of Welch Village and taking his Jeep on off-road adventures. Jake is excited to use his talents in his hometown, and we are thrilled to have him onboard. Thanks, Jake.
Hey, everyone. This evening, I have the pleasure of introducing our newest paid-on-call firefighters. I am not the chief, nor do I play one on TV, but I will step in in his stead with just a little bit of information. We do have four of our paid-on-call firefighters with us here this evening, so if you would join me. The paid-on-call firefighter is a heroic role for the city, and we could not function in the manner that we do without them. They go through extensive training, just like our regular firefighters, but they are there at a moment's notice, at the drop of a hat, if we need them. They're trained in EMT and firefighter, and if I'm correct, you guys have completed firefighter courses or EMT? One of the two, right, this fall?
EMT.
EMT, all right. Firefighter starts shortly.
We're in hazmat currently.
See, fantastic, right? They're all over it. So they are going to be well-trained, and you'll see them out and about as we get moving forward in completing their training. So they're a wonderful, necessary complement to the work that our firefighters do here in the city. And so I will introduce them all to you, and not all of them are new. The first name on the list, John Jameson, is actually returning paid-on-call firefighter. So not all these folks are new. They come and join us, and then they come back and hang out with us. Mason Johnson, Lucas Knoll, Duncan Costant, Wendy Menka, Krista Moes, Jason Stapleton, Jesse Viall, Mike Wagner, and Bobby Wood. So welcome aboard. We're glad to have you here. These folks represent two recent classes that we had start with us late last summer and last fall, and they were too busy to join us with the classes and things that they were in, so they conflicted on Mondays. So welcome aboard. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, City leaders, thank you for the opportunity to present some of our new reserves. And so Gino Messina and Terry Auger, if you could step forward, please. So for those of you who do not know, we do have a reserve unit with the Hastings Police Department, and this group really is a huge support for our sworn staff. Just to give you an example, they help out and really cover Rivertown days, probably, you know, really do it without little support from the law enforcement sworn officers. Also gobblegate, the holiday train, pride parade, and then routine patrol. So they will come in during their off-time from their regular job and help out our patrol division. So Gino Messina, who is right here, we welcome him back to the team as he served as a reserve years ago. Gino is currently a dispatcher with the Dakota County Communications 911 Center and is a member of the Planning Commission for the City of Hastings. Gino enjoys camping when he is not working and serving the Hastings community, and we are very excited to have Gino back, so thank you, Gino. And Terry Auger has been a resident of Hastings for the last three years. Terry served in the U.S. Army and is recently retired. Terry was looking to give back to the community, has a great sense of humor that fits in well with the unit, and we look forward to working with him as a reserve officer, so welcome. Thank you. And Alan Jaeger could not be with us tonight. Alan is a resident of Hastings. He's 18 years old, so we look forward to bringing that youth into the group. He is set to graduate from Hastings High School this spring. He's looking forward to working with the community and gaining experience in the law enforcement field as he is planning to pursue a career in law enforcement, and he will begin his schooling in the fall. We welcome Alan. We look forward to working with him as well. And that is no slight to you, gentlemen, because I know you're young at heart, but we're not 18 anymore, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, if we could step forward for a photo?
We're going to have a photo with the council, so if you want to go up there, that would be great.
All right.
I don't know if I'm going to be up there. We'll see.
Okay, it's always a very exciting time for the city when we have new employees and new promotions, so it's all good news. So tonight, we have a presentation by our Dakota County Historical Society and the LaDuke Historic Estate, and Matt and Mariah are with us tonight.
All right. Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and present. So for those that aren't familiar, I know there's a couple new council members. My name is Matt Carter. I'm Executive Director at the Dakota County Historical Society. Our organization was founded in 1939 in South St. Paul, and we operate three historic sites within Dakota County. The LaDuke Estate here in Hastings, the South St. Paul location is our Lashi Museum, and then the Sibley Historic Site in Mendona. So those are the three sites we operate within the county. And one of the things that I wanted to talk about was we had our Lashi Museum in South St. Paul was closed in November 2021, and we just reopened for, I guess, for the first time in January of 2023 after undergoing renovations of that museum. And we have six new exhibits, and one of them, Mariah helped put together on the Hastings Needlework Company. So we have that as well as a suffrage exhibit that deals with women's suffrage, but also the MWSA that was founded here in Hastings as well. Some of the projects we have going on as an organization that impact Hastings and the LaDuke Estate is our George Daniels Project, and that's really looking at the story of George and Chloe Daniels on the site of the LaDuke Estate. And with that, we received a $97,000 grant to hire an outside consultant to come in and, through their design team, create a concept plan for a brand-new exhibit that's going to take over kind of the Carriage Barn, the Simmons Shed, as well as portions of the grounds. And with that, we started that project in December of this last year. It was funded through the Minnesota Historical Society's Legacy Grants. And with that, we should be able to get through the next two design phases for that with schematic design and design development. And then we'll have another design development phase and the fabrication and installation of that. So our goal is to have that completed by about 2025. Most of what we're doing, there's about two, it's about 350,000 total that will be put into this project with about 150,000 remaining for the final two design phases once this $97,000 grant is complete, which we expect to have done in about June of this year. So hopefully, we'll be able to go forward with another application to the Minnesota Historical Society's Legacy Funds and continue that process moving forward. Another one that we're looking at is, based off of the conversations that we had with our stakeholders, so we had some city council members, Councilmember Fults was involved with that, as a stakeholder group that came together to kind of talk about what this exhibit for the George Daniels Project at the LaDuke Estate could look like. And the conversation quickly expanded to, the story of George and Chloe Daniels is an important one for the site, but it's not unique to the history of the county or the region. So if you're not familiar, George was a former slave that served in the Confederate Army, so it's an interesting story in its own, but the project itself is a lot larger than that. So one of the things we're looking at doing is expanding the history of African-Americans in the region with this project, as well as a new partnership that we formed with BR4R, or Building Remembrance for Reconciliation, where we're going to try and receive a grant through the partnership program through the Minnesota Historical Society to, once again, hire consultants to come in and help us envision what a Black heritage trail throughout the area could look like. And we quickly have realized that we need to hone it in and focus just on the city itself, and then from there, we can expand it to the rest of the county. And there's a Minnesota, I think it's Alliances, or Minnesota Alliance of Churches, is looking at how we can expand beyond Hastings in the county through St. Paul and Minneapolis and further up into the outer metro. So this project is kind of the starting point for something that could grow into a much larger project. And we'll be working with city staff as we get going forward on what this could potentially look like within the community. And then the other exciting thing, which Mariah can elaborate on more or answer any questions you have, in 2005, when the city was turned over the LaDuke Estate by the Minnesota Historical Society, the Historical Society took all the LaDuke artifacts out and put them in storage at their facilities. Mariah spent hours over the last couple of months going through at least 100 boxes of these artifacts that the Minnesota Historical Society is looking to de-accession from their collection, turn them over to DCHS, and give us the ability to put the original LaDuke artifacts back into the house. So again, this is furniture, some of the original books that William published on convincing the world of life after death. So a lot of these unique things that haven't been seen in the house for decades, if not, you know, longer than that, maybe even 100, 100 years or so. So Mariah spent a lot of time at the History Center, going through boxes and trying to track down what's in these collections that we're hoping to bring back. Their goal is the spring, so our goal is to hopefully have these in place for the public to start viewing in the summer of 2023. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mariah, and she can continue on hers.
So before I give you just the general update that I have prepared, do you have any questions on anything Matt said before that? Anything you want to add about? Okay, great. So just as a recap, it's been just a little while since we've been to see you. So we've had a lot of different things that we've been doing at the site. As far as events, many of them are events that we typically host, and others were new ones we tried. In March of 2022, we actually hosted a virtual tea, and this was because there was risk of being shut down again. So rather than having an in-person event, we decided to be responsible and host a virtual tea. Typically, we do four teas a year, Valentine's Day, Mother's Day, and two at Christmas time, but we decided to mix it up a little bit, and we actually did a spring Equinox Tea. So we did a completely different theme, and we talked about a different subject, which was a lot of fun. Then in April, we hosted one of our Coffee with the General events, which is like a casual presentation series that we do. And this one, James Curry presented at, and he talked about Brown's Chapel, the Black AME church that burned down, or rather, was burned down here in Hastings. And he spoke about his family's connection to that as well. We opened, as usual, in May on the 12th last year. This year, we will be opening on the 11th, which, incidentally, is also Statehood Day, so we might do something fun for that. We also held our Mother's Day Tea as planned, and we were able to host our Pinecrest second graders for school tours. So these were our first in-person school tours since the COVID shutdown and then COVID restrictions. We had been doing them virtually, so it was really exciting to have them back in the classroom in the house. So we hosted five classrooms, all of the second graders, and we typically do a scavenger hunt with them. So I have prepared this. We take pictures of items from around the house. We send it to the class in advance, and then they have something to look for when they're on their tour. And actually, they have to ask questions about those items, and then they go back to their classrooms, and they do a project where they present to their classmates what they learned. So it's a really fun partnership that we've developed with the teachers at Pinecrest. In June, we just had regular tours, no presentations or events. July, we actually hosted a shed sale fundraiser in partnership with the Hastings Area Historical Society. And what we did there is we actually took items that were surplus from the house or things that had been stored there for years that weren't actually artifacts and were mostly taking up storage space. And we did essentially a garage sale, and then we had people who allowed, we allowed people to donate their items to, and we did this as a fundraiser for the site, and we raised about $1,200, which was really exciting. And all of those proceeds went towards supporting the LaDuke and its running fees, et cetera. In August, we held our concerts again, sponsored by Merchants Bank. They sponsor our Orchard Concerts every year so that they can be free for the public to visit, and then we allow other groups to come in and sell pie and ice cream to do a fundraiser for them, and we collect donations on the side, in-kind donations. So we had roughly 427 people attend those over the course of the four weekends, and we raised $775.16 in donations, which is pretty awesome. Then in September, we did Civil War Weekend. We had about 225 people come to that, which was really exciting. It was completely sponsored again this year, which meant that everything that was paid as far as admission just put us further into the Black and helped to support that program. We actually received a large sponsorship from the South Robert Street Business Association. They donated $5,000 to help support all of our programs and events last year. So everything was covered, which meant that all of the registration just went right back to the site, which was really something that was very awesome for us in addition to the fact that we got all of our regular sponsors for Civil War Weekend, too. So it was really successful this year. We also brought back a cavalry member, so there was a horse at the LaDuke for Civil War Weekend this year, and we are hoping to have him come back again next year, as well as two new exhibits, one about the history of the telegram and one about children's toys and games from the period. Then again, in September, we had another school tour. This time, it was the return of the Design and Housing High School class. They typically come every year, but this year, instead of giving them the standard tour, we actually gave them the Andrew Jackson Downing Architecture Tour that I wrote for the site so that it was more geared to their class and the needs that they had there. We also had a number of rentals in September and October, as well as our candlelight tours in October. We sold out all but one of those time slots, which was really great to see again because we typically sell them out and have to add more times, but it was going a little slow, and then we had a final surge, which was really awesome. As well as another Coffee with the General, in which we had a paranormal investigative team come in and talk about the evidence of investigations that they've done at the house, which was a perfect Halloween, October event to have the sort of spooky season theme. Then in December, our Victorian Holiday Teas, as well as some more rentals, and then our Second Annual LaDuke Holiday Soiree. So this is the second year that we've done it. It's also sponsored by Merchants Bank. And we have live music. We host it at Hastings Golf Club and Events, and we do a raffle as well as dinner and drinks. And then all of the money that's raised is utilized as a fundraiser for the site as well because it is sponsored by the bank. We can use all of the proceeds to further do that. We also use it as a thank you to our membership for all of their contributions throughout the year. So it's sort of a twofold moment and also just a great way to partner with a local business and do things along those lines. So that's like the really quick rundown from the last time we saw you of all the things that have happened at the site. We then also, in January, had our grand reopening. We had no presentations. And then in February, we did a documentary showing a Valentine's Tea, as well as some rentals, and a partnership with Spiral Brewery where we did a taproom takeover. That was really so much fun, and we presented on the history of William LaDuke in partnership with their canning of the LaDuke Red IPA. So pretty, pretty fun things have been going on, but that's the general rundown. If you have questions about that, I would be happy to answer them.
Sure. Thanks, Mariah and Matt. I do have a question. So you said that your, that LaDuke can be rented?
Yes.
How many people can you bring in, or can a party bring in? Yes.
So I recommend between 35 and 40 if you want to have seating. We've had more than that. I know that the Chamber hosted a gathering there, and there were at least 115 people that came through the house. We've had other gatherings that are like that, too, where it's sort of like just a walk-in type drop-in event. So we can accommodate that, but if you want to have a sit-down, then you would want to have about 40 as your max.
Okay, great.
To be comfortable.
Great information, yeah.
Yeah.
It's always exciting to hear your updates because, you know, you think about a year's process, and, you know, a year goes fast, but then when you hear everything that's going on, just at the LaDuke,
Right.
it makes it realize, oh, yeah, it really did go fast, so, yeah.
Yeah, it keeps us on our toes.
Yes, that's good. Council, any questions? Councilmember House?
Just a comment. I just want to say I appreciate your work so much with this. I've walked through the historical landmarks with James Curry, and I appreciate you guys pulling that forward. It's a very cool project that you guys are doing, and I am grateful for your work and can't wait to see it continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to say see you next year, but see you soon at the LaDuke. Councilmembers, are there any corrections to the February 21st meeting? Okay, public comments from the audience. Public comments, we have options for comments to be mailed in prior to the meeting as well as interactive feature during the meeting. The mailed-in comments, they have been forwarded to the city council, and their receipt is acknowledged. Please recognize the items not on the agenda will not be discussed this evening. For live comments, you may either raise your hand and step forward to the microphone. We will ask you to state your name and your address. If you'd wish to speak to someone at the council at this point, you may step forward. Anyone on Zoom? No one on Zoom, okay. Councilmembers, are there any council items to be considered? Okay, consent agenda. Council, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Pembel? Councilmember House? Any discussion, council? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay, and that motion prevails. Tonight, we have the 2023 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvements Project, and for this item, we have introduction by Public Works Director Ryan Stemsky. We will have a public hearing and potential action by the council. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. Yes, it's that time of year for us to jump into our improvement hearing of the 2023 Neighborhood Infrastructure Project, so we'll cover that tonight. We have a little presentation on those improvements. We'll conduct the public hearing and then look for the council to be approving a resolution, approving the plans, and authorizing ad for bids. And that's in your packets tonight. Some of the project goals, similar to this program, one of our main goals is to address the failing pavements, and there's a lot of them out there if you've driven the roads lately with this winter, but address the failing pavements from a capital perspective that are beyond their useful life. So that's really the primary goal. During that pavement replacement, we also look at those outer edges. We improve the concrete curb and gutter or replace it entirely, and that is improving drainage and edge protection of our roadway systems. We also look at the storm sewer system and the grades of our road. The best thing we can do is to shed water off in an efficient manage, a mint style and get it off of our roadways to save those roadways long-term. So all these things are on the street and storm sewer side, but we also have an opportunity to adjust our aging utilities in town. When we're ripping up the roadways and the roadbases, we replace our aged water main pipe that's due for it. We line or replace our aged sanitary sewer pipe. And then when we're doing those full replacements, we have the opportunity to replace the individual service lines out to the right-of-way. This year, too, another goal was to enhance our bike and pedestrian safety and connectivity during these projects. So for 2023, here's our project map. It's online. It's been passed around in a lot of city informational material, but our full reconstruction this year is Pleasant Drive, and that, really, the reconstruction area is from 15th Street down to the bridge of Vermillion River. We also have full reconstruction at Old Bridge Lane. The segments in green are our reclaimed projects, so those are the projects we've talked about in the past. More efficient way of being able to recycle and mix up our pavement and our underlying gravel materials. Do spot curb and gutter. gravel materials, do spot curb and gutter and apron replacement, and then use that material as a good foundation for us to build the new pavement upon. So those, we, we have reclaims at 18th Court, Ridgewood Court, Southview Drive and Southview Place, and then on Pleasant from the river, south to 46. That distinguishment there is condition of the roadway was a good opportunity south of the river, and then we don't have any utilities, sewer and water. So opportunity to do a reclaim on that segment. So like I was saying about our, our pedestrian and bicycle safety, we, we review our guidance from council in the way of comp plans and other existing plans adopted by council. The People Movement Plan is something we research before we dive into our capital improvements for streets. This year, we synced up a guiding principle of bringing a multi-use trail down Pleasant Drive, as you can see here in the People Movement Plan. So that's incorporated in our improvements, as you'll see on Pleasant Drive. We also have the opportunity with capital improvements to connect a multi-regional or multi-facility trail to loop around the golf course, back over to the new proposed trail system on Pleasant Drive. So that's along Southview Drive. Here in red, to provide a, we'll get into that a little bit later, but providing eight-foot grade-separated trail to connect those systems up. So jumping right into Pleasant Drive, here's how it looks today. Kind of a sea of potholes from one side to the other. I joked that it's unpleasant drive right now, last time I get to use that. So, but built in the mid-'60s to, to early-'70s, we have five-foot sidewalks on either side. It does get about 4,000 vehicles per day, so that puts it, puts it in our collector road system in the city. It's 45, 44 feet wide currently, and we do see, as you can see in the picture here, minimal parking demand on the street, mostly because there isn't driveway access as on Pleasant Here's our Old Bridge Lane. We can see evidence of, of the failed sub base with the alligator cracking you see on the street. This is a very wide local street at 36 feet, so we'll talk about that. 18th Street Court, and these, these were all built in the, in the, in the early '70s or, or '80s. Again, 36-foot wide cul-de-sac, low volume, similar distresses with the alligator cracking, indicative of a failed base system and a very brittle pavement surface. Again, spots on Southview Place here. Southview Drive, we're not going to see as all those distresses are underneath Southview Drive. What we did in 2016 is that roadway system was getting pretty bad in potholing, and so we deployed our thin overlay program that we do at Public Works. So these are one of the, the roads in our capital improvement program that we've masked and put a thin Band-Aid on, but it's starting to crack through, as you can see here at the joints, and once it does, over the coming years, it'll fail at a very rapid pace. So it's in the, in the capital improvement program this year. Pleasant Drive, so looking at proposed improvements, because of the parking demand and some benefits we receive with narrowing of streets, we're proposing a 35-foot total street width on Pleasant Drive, so that's a nine-foot reduction from today's width. We also are looking to accommodate that new 10-foot wide multi-use trail. The lanes would be 11-foot driving lanes with a nine-foot parking lane on the west side only, and we'll talk about some of the reasons for that in the coming slides. And then there'd be no parking on the east side, and just a four-foot reaction shoulder would, would be on, on the east side. So you can kind of see the, the setup here. Here's a, here's a photo of Pleasant Drive, and you can kind of see on the east side of the street is where we looked to put a trail, but mature trees, power poles, fences, and all their common conflicts really made that prohibitive. Over on the west side, we have a, we had a much more open and, and, and accepting corridor for us to nicely fit in the 10-foot wide trail. So that was one of the major reasons, less impact, lower cost, to fit the trail in on the west side. For comparison purposes of what this section would look like, if you've driven 10th Street by the Public Works Facility or the dog park, this is the area where it'll kind of look and feel like what we're proposing on Pleasant Drive. So another one of our collector roads in town, where you'll see the nine-foot park lane on one side, the elimination of parking on the other side. And they're very similar in total width, 36 versus 35. And so if you drive that corridor segment, that'll, or have, if you can visualize it, that's what this segment is being proposed as. So the improvements on Pleasant Drive, starting at 15th Street, what we're looking to do, kind of like what I was talking about, there's not much sanitary sewer in Pleasant Drive, but we are lining the segment that this first block has. We're looking at full replacement of the water main. It's cast water main with evidence, we've had a lot of breaks out in the area, so in the vintage of that pipe, it's time to replace. So we got full replacement of utilities, the addition of sanitary sewer. We've got new base material, new pavements, new, new concrete curb and gutter, and then you'll see in yellow, the multi-use trail on the west side of the street coming down. Moving your way south on the corridor, another reason you'll see Pleasant Park is on the west side, so that's a, that's a key destination point for trail users, and so another good use of the trail location. Continuing southerly, we, not shown in the arrow here, but we do have Villas at Pleasant, the new development, just for reference point. Same improvements carried throughout this corridor. South and North Ridge Drive, we have an existing 10-foot trail segment already on the west side, so we're, that's in good shape. We're, we're just connecting into it to save some costs and resources. And then when we get down to the south end, this is the transition at the bridge. We're looking to do some bridge improvements to accept that 10-foot widening, and we would switch on the south side of the bridge to a full reclaim, leaving the curb and gutter in place, so it'll stay a little wider, because there, we're going to salvage those, the curb and gutter. One thing to note here, you'll see kind of in the, in the blue or turquoise color, just south of the bridge, the county is looking to do an underpass. So this is not at city cost. This is something that we're working on coordinating the time and the scope with the county. We're, we're setting up our trail system so that would, it would conveniently connect into this underpass. And so now with a trail on both sides, that limits the need for our users to cross the system, or cross Pleasant, so those folks from the east side can stay on the east side trail system, west, west side trail system, and then regionally, they can be connected south of the river through the underpass system. There's not really any great spots to put crossings for, for prominent trail use on Pleasant Drive, so this is one of the key features to get trails on both sides and then a safe underpass system coordination with county. So then moving on to Southview Drive and Southview Place, this is switching over to our reclaim improvements, where we're leaving predominantly the curb and gutter in place. And then we would be looking to put a grade-separated eight-foot trail just behind the curb, just because of the restrictions of right-of-way there, pulling that trail in right behind the curb, getting it up off of the street surface in the boulevard area to safely convey bicyclists and tra, and pedestrians from the west view, south view intersection at the golf course over to Pleasant Drive. This, this S-curve has been a series of complaints for the Public Works Department over the past, you know, several years. I've received many of them over the past decade. Just unsafe coming around that curve, walking dogs, bringing children on walks, et cetera, bicyclists, and some of that S-turn curving movement. So this was the time that we had identified in the program, once we have the improvements, the streets ripped up, this would be the time to work with those impacts and with the residents to try to fit in a trail as convenient as possible. Plus, we do have some sanitary sewer lining as well, improved, proposed in this segment, and we are doing some spot fixes to our water main system. Not full replacements, but just replacing bolts and, and sprucing up our, our utilities where it's needed. Moving on to Ridgewood Court, you can see here, again, some, some valve replacement and sanitary sewer lining in combination with the, the street reclaim. 18th Street Court, same thing with the sanitary sewer lining. The sewer system does go between two homes northerly up to 17th, so it's kind of a unique situation where lining is a great tool there, so we don't have to go in, you can imagine, trying to construct between that narrow home surface, but, but lining is a great technology for us to shoot those improvements through without disrupting those, those properties. And then brings us to Old Bridge Lane. Old Bridge Lane is full reconstruction, so the, the sewer, the water systems and the storm sewer systems fully in need of repair, and we'll get full, full replacements as well as the gravel surface and the bituminous and, and concrete curb and gutter. So brings us to total project cost, $4.3 million for all the improvements that we discussed here tonight. That breaks up, as you see on the pie chart, just under $2.9 million in bonded debt, $650,000 in, from our water fund, $300,000 from our wastewater fund, and then $500,000 in total assessments of the project. You will know, we didn't, even though Pleasant is a collector road, we did not tap into the state aid funds for our streets for this particular project. The assessments, just to drill on those a little bit, we will have an assessment hearing next month, and so that'll be noticed and sent out to all the impacted properties and posted in our local paper. But just to kind of give folks an indication of what the assessments are looking to be, it would be for our reconstruction streets, for a home, it'd be about seven, it'd be the 7,650 per lot. So switching to more of a unit method this year, not a front-foot method, just due to all the corner lot challenges, the curvilinear challenges, the, the per-lot unit method made a lot of sense with our third-party appraiser, and so that's what we're proposing this year. The reclaimed streets, their, their benefit is projected at 6,750 per lot. So those are the two numbers, whether you fall on a reconstruction street or a reclaimed street, that's the per-home lot assessment. One thing of note, we still have our corner lot system, so if your short side is on an improved road, you'd get 100% at a corner. If your long side is also on approved, approved road, you don't get that same amount. You, you get that backed off to a quarter or 25% of the, the unit assessment, all following our ordinance guidance, guidance here. So our assessment totals of the $4.3 million project, just 140, 450,000 in total private assessments to fund the project, help fund the project. That's just over 10 point, or 10%. Key note there is we typically are shooting for the 20% mark to do our improvement bonds, so this year, since we're under that, we have to go through a few more steps in the street reconstruction bond. So that process has already been started with our finance group. Just wanted to note that. Some of the reasons for that lower assessment percentage, though, is really, like I said earlier, with Pleasant Drive, we don't have those fronting units, so those are all back lots that don't receive their driveway benefit or direct benefit. And so that's the different nuance with, with Pleasant Drive this year. So moving forward, we, we did, just, just to note, we did meet with our Ops Committee at the end of last year to talk about these improvements and talk about the assessment methodology, and, and gained momentum and, and support from our Operations Committee. That fast-forwards us to tonight, where we do have the public hearing to, to be held after the presentation here. And then council would, would be considering a resolution to approve the plans and specs and authorize the ad for bids for the project. That moves us forward into next month. April 3rd would be the assessment hearing. April 7th is when we'd open those bids. And again, it's so important to stay on our schedule if, if, if we're able to, because just like everything post-COVID, the market is, is fluctuating on us. We want to get bids out early. We want contractors competing on our projects to drive the prices down and, and be able to schedule improvements to get done this summer. So that's why we try to do the April 7th award. That brings a construction contract back to the council on the, the April 17th meeting. It'll allow us to get an early start if we can, if weather allows, and may, and conclude by, by that October time. We will continue with our, our communications campaign. This is something we take a lot of pride in, in Hastings. I think we do this very well. We, we take the time to write up detailed communication each week of the project, so folks will know what's happening in the current week, what'll happen next week, looking out ahead. They can sign up to talk with us about how they want to be communicated with, whether that's email or text, or just go drought, you know, go pick it up in our, our mailbox that we'll set up centrally located on the site. During critical activities, like if we need to shut, shut water off for a few hours or a morning, or whatever it may be, obviously, we'll be doing door hangers and knocking on doors and communicating with our residents that way. And again, we have representation out on site every day the contractor's working, so come find those city vehicles, or always call the department if you have any questions or concerns. Our website is something that we've been growing and nurturing, and it's in a very good state. It saves all of these presentations, all of these reference documents of what we're doing and why we're doing things. You'll find all those updates weekly compiled, if you want to kind of trace them together. Great resources for our residents and, and folks that want to get to know more about the project. So with that, I'll stand for any questions to the council or turn it over for the public hearing process.
I think Ryan will do the public hearing first and then have discussion from the council.
Great.
So at this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to the project? Please step forward and use our microphone and state your name and address. Anyone wish to speak to the project?
Hi, my name is Kathy Ellis, and I live at 1310 Southview. This is my home, and the new home of a bituminous trail. And I, just I'm curious about funding for this, since it's a connection to a pathway that is part of a county path. Could there be more funding to help assist homeowners with this? And I don't know, would you like the front of your, you know, probably a $5,000 landscape installation completely removed, and what will remain is a eight-foot blacktop path with a post for a mailbox? And all the other neighbors have, you know, beautiful mailboxes. That's kind of the house we bought when we bought it 20 years ago. So aesthetically, this is an issue for us. We're going to lose a big tree in front, which I guess maybe we would lose down the road anyway, but aesthetics, I guess, is the biggest thing. And Southview is also not being narrowed, so I don't really, I, I know there's never been an accident since I've lived on Southview on that S-curve. I know it's, is a major walking path, and it's just a hop, skip, and a jump to Pleasant from Westview. We make that path ourselves all the time. I just, because the rest of Southview was narrowed, I question whether or not there couldn't be a bike lot lane in the street to accommodate this short distance, instead of moving utilities, cutting down trees, backing up, you know, eight to 10 feet into these three-floor properties that would be affected, just as an alternative. And I know that you're pretty late-stage in the planning, and I also want to mention that Mr. Cody Matheson was amazing to work with. He, we had major concerns about, we're an elderly population on that street, for the most part. Mike and I are close to retirement, and, you know, this is like, we want to be sure the resale of our home is there for that time coming close, probably, that we'd want to, you know, resell our property. And the assessor mentioned that he thought it would be an improvement for young families wanting to come in to be able to jump on a trail like that. I don't think so. Just my personal opinion, I feel like it is really going to take away from the aesthetic of our property for resale, and that our assessed value should be considered lower because of it, the project. We may not have a choice. I just wanted to speak on that. And we are users of the trail system. I'm just wondering if there couldn't be more funding from the county and potentially state, and where's this trillion-dollar infrastructure? And where's this trillion dollar infrastructure package that was just passed by the federal government? You know, are we jumping too far ahead of this project or into this project coming out of COVID when people are struggling financially and, you know, we're putting a lot of burden on? And I see the cracks in the street and I, it is very unpleasant driving. I, I totally get that, but is this the right time for a project like this? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, I, I think I can speak to some of the points there. Um, yeah, we, we have our eyes on that IIJA money as well. I, I hear you, but, um, um, not, not necessarily applicable to neighborhood type improvements. So that's for our trunk highway sixty-one improvements and other conduits. But, um, as far as, uh, the street width was one of the comments, um, really with the reclaim, um, program, the benefit there is to leave those curbs in place and not have to reconstruct and, and pull one in when it's a functional, um, in very good shape. Um, and so really the, the program that we've put it under in the reclaim, one of the, one of the negatives of the reclaims is then you're stuck to the street width, right? Because you're using the benefit of keeping those in place. So that's one of the pieces of not narrowing the street, um, or bringing a, a on-street trail. That's, that's a safety comparison, right? So you can stripe it, but you know, if, if there's a car coming around and there's a vision sight distance issue, um, we, from a safety standpoint, would rather have the Peds and the bike users grade separated, so pulled up on that curb and protected behind that curb for an added safety feature. So that's one of the, the trade-offs there in, in comparison. I'm trying to think if there was anything else that was, was missing. As far as funding goes, um, since it's in a city right-of-way connecting city trail systems, um, the county is not going to kick in for that particular system. They are looking to fund the, um, that, that Vermillion River Regional Greenway Corridor. So down at the, the south end of Pleasant along forty-six, that underpass would be a hundred percent funded by the county or any regional trail. But the local trail systems, um, no, nothing for this particular project. And the timing of doing these trail improvements or sidewalk improvements, whatever it may be, we really, we, we receive these comments over years and decades. Uh, and a lot of times it's more costly and more disruptive if we do them one-off, these one-off trail systems. So our answer a lot of time to the public is, thank you for your concern. When we are doing a capital improvement program, we'll add in the trail or sidewalk feature, right? That's the time to do it. We have economies of scale. We have mobilization cost savings. We can coordinate the design together with the street improvements and the impacts. And so we really save up those combined projects for these key connections at the time of the capital improvement program. So that, that, that's why it's all in the project tonight, but, um, definitely valid points. And, uh, I think our staff, specifically Cody, has been working with all the residents impacted in this corridor and talking about the tree impacts and driveway impacts and doing the best we can to make it, um, manageable and an improvement that, that it can be. So, um, I think I addressed most of the comments.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else wish to speak to the council at this time?
Hello, my name is Shane Lanning. I'm on Old Bridge, right on the corner of Old Bridge and Pleasant. So I just had, um, one public safety question. If there is any sort of, uh, speed, you know, signal signs or anything like that that are going to be installed, kind of like when you're coming into town, the first, uh, when it goes from fifty-five down to forty-five, if there's any of those potential public safety items being right on a corner lot as soon as folks turn that corner and they start down that hill, it does become a middle or a mini speedway going down there quite fast. And if it's going to be narrowed up, it could be a potential concern for future accidents if there are kids going in or out of those pathways, playing down by the river, so on and so forth. So I was really curious if, to see if there was any sort of public safety items such as speed, uh, signs or anything like that. Other than that, I just wanted to compliment Ryan and Cody. I know I talk to you guys quite a bit with not only the road project, but the Perry Restoration Project. So thank you for keeping that project in mind for, for our property as well. And, um, the website has been really, really helpful. I've had quite a few, uh, clients at my business asking me, hey, I know you're right on the corner of Old Bridge and that's going to be reconstructed. I've directed them right to the website. So it's a great resource, a great tool. So I just wanted to thank your, uh, office for that. But again, thank you for the time. I know I talked to you guys quite a bit, maybe a half an hour, forty-five minutes off a couple, a couple of opportunities there. But the, uh, public safety thing, that was my biggest concern. I got kids. Sometimes they're smart, sometimes they're not smart. We got the river right there and I used to remember being a kid. So I just want to see if we can make sure we get some sort of public safety piece on that corridor, please. So, thank you.
Thanks, Shane.
Thank you, and I appreciate those comments. The staff does work very hard on these projects and, uh, it's, it's very nice to hear that. Regarding the, the, the safety improvements or the, the driver feedback sign, um, a lot of times with these new projects, uh, with, with the new smooth pavement, we, we get rid of all the potholes, but we, we invite, you know, that new runway type feel. So we, we will, and we have worked very closely with our police department. We have a speed trailer that we, we usually deploy first. We, we take traffic counts post-project. We see where speeding may be at its highest and then we deploy with the help of the police department, um, these temporary features like, like speed trailers. And if the problem is justifiable or we feel that it's needing some attention, our police departments have been very active in purchasing those, the, the driver feedback signs that you've seen in town that give you your speed feedback. Um, and that's, that's a program that we work with PD. And if something is justifiable, we would, we'd be, we work to get those in the right location post-project. So yes, it's on our minds, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else wish to speak to the council on the infrastructure project? Okay, anyone on Zoom? No one on Zoom. So at this time I will close the public hearing and open discussion for council. Council, Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I have, I have a kind of a list, so you might want to stand up. First, the, the, just kind of working backwards here, the speed sign, narrowing the roads traditionally creates a behavior of slower driving too, correct? So we may see some benefit from that as well?
Correct. Uh, physically narrowing the geometry of Old Bridge and narrowing the geometry, the width of Pleasant in addition to striping the lanes in a more narrow fashion. So narrowing from a few different perspectives, absolutely.
So we may seem, see some benefits from it, um, just from that. The bridge, um, on your, your, your maps, your slides, um, can you, can you just explain the, the work that's going to be done on the bridge? You have that red, one, one more, there you go. Are we widening that?
Correct. It's essentially a, I think we're at a six-foot sidewalk currently. And so what, what it would be doing is essentially adding additional four foot, call it a sidewalk expansion. So we dowel in and expand the concrete. So we have a mass of a total ten foot. So you're not going ten foot into six foot narrowing and by surprise. So we have the room to do it on the bridge. We did it on the east side. Um, so we're looking at state aid standards, design loading on it, um, and then bidding it out. If all of that comes together, that's something we'd like to try to achieve for the bridge.
And the, the condition of the bridge is in still very good condition, correct?
Correct. Yep. Some crack filling and, but other than that, nope, it's structurally sound.
Okay. The rates, do we have any adverse effects on, on rates when we're, when we're looking at this by going less than the twenty percent or is it just extra work or, you know, is it?
Correct. Good question. Um, just extra work, there's extra public hearings. We'll get the same general obligation bonds at the same rate potential. So it does not, we just need to do an, we, we did an additional public hearing, um, and, and some few additional steps, I guess. I'm not the expert on that. We could, we could dive into that further with, uh, finance, but, yep, additional steps.
It's the first project in five or six years it's been that low, so that's why.
Yes, yep.
Okay, and then the, um, the path, um, issue with the, the mailbox and, and the landscaping and whatnot. I will say, I mean, it's, it depends on your perspective, of course. We purchased a home that has a path and it was one of the perks because we knew that our kids could have kind of a big place to play right in front of our home and not on the street and, um, and all that. And it's been a huge benefit to us personally, but that doesn't mean that everybody has little tiny kids at home and, and, and it could be a negative if you see it that way. You know, what options are there for this, this situation to help address, um, post-construction landscaping and, and things like that to bring it, um, back to some semblance of what it, what it was and what they envisioned it to be prior to all of this?
Sure. Yeah, as far as landscaping goes, um, we do have some, uh, budget items that we can work on some landscaping elements. The, the most tangible one, we've already worked with our city forester to replace the fullest, uh, transferable tree size that we can do for that tree to thrive and survive. So, um, the, the ash tree that's coming out, um, will be replaced with the maximum size that, you know, it could be to be successful. You know, we, sometimes we've, we've done some, some shrubbery or some, some other additional things. So again, I think we're not opposed to, we have a little bit of, of wiggle room. Um, sometimes we, we carry a couple additional trees in the budget because if we don't need them, we can use that budget for other things. Um, so we could look at things like that. We could look at things like, I, I believe we talked to the resident about, you know, widening, widening the driveway radius so we can allow more room for their particular movements or finding that as a benefit. You know, some things of those natures, just strategically locating the new mailbox where, where best we can and can protect it. So, I mean, there will be impacts, but those are some of the minor things we can do to, to try to work with the resident and see what they find appealing within our budget, within our, within our scope of doing that work to make it a little more palatable.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd, I'd ask that you, you do work with them and, you know, we're, we're not talking a massive expense, but more of a, I think, a fair accommodation. So, um, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lund. Any additional discussion, council? And Ryan, just for clarification, if this, this trail does go through, this will not be the residence's responsibility for shoveling?
Correct. This, um, both the multi-use trail on Pleasant, which would be a park connectivity, um, in, in a parks department plowed facility, same thing with the, the trail directly behind the curb, um, because of the difference of not having a boulevard there. Our, our snowplow, um, wake, if you will, excess plows right directly onto that boulevard space, and so we remove it as well. So there would not be a quote unquote sidewalk removal responsibility, uh, not for the two trail systems going in.
Okay, thank you. If no further discussion, council, then I would accept a motion to approve the resolution approving the plans and authorizing of advertisement for bids for project twenty twenty-three dash one, the twenty twenty-three neighborhood, uh, infrastructure improvements. Councilmember Fox? Councilmember Lund? An additional new discussion, council?
Can you explain the super majority detail that's indicated in memo?
Certainly, Your Honor, members of the council. In order to order a project that has not been petitioned by the property owners, the city council must authorize it and order the project by a, a super majority vote. You don't have a super majority vote present tonight, so you need six of seven people to vote in favor of it, and you don't have six council members present. So that's why you can't order the project, but you can approve the plans, authorize going out for bids. If for some reason, when it comes back in front of you to order the project and it is not, does not pass on a super majority vote, then we simply wouldn't award it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any discussion, council? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thanks, Ryan. Thank you, Cody. Okay, under Public Works to authorize LNS Electric to complete the Hastings Hydro Facility preventative, sorry, maintenance program development. And Ryan, you may continue.
Great, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, you will find, hand it out right before the meeting, an actual copy of the agreement with LNS. Um, the terms and conditions changed slightly. Um, so we wanted to make sure tonight, after the presentation, you're voting on the actual agreement with the terms updated by our city attorney. So it has been seen by her and corrected, um, by LNS. And that's what you're, what you have in front of you tonight. So I just wanted to make that distinction quick. So, um, tonight we want to talk about the hydroelectric study that we have in the twenty twenty-three budget. And just for everybody that this is a great kind of angle photo of what and where our hydroelectric facility is. Um, this is lock and dam number two on the Mississippi River. And our hydro facility is located right in this location. So we're in, we're sandwiched in between the lock system and the dam on, on the other side. So that's, if you're ever out and about, we'd, we'd be more than happy to, to bring you out there. The facility itself was built in nineteen eighty-five over a course, a couple of years, completed in nineteen eighty-seven. At that time, it was ten million dollars to construct the facility. There's two units that generate power at it, um, and each have two point two mega, megawatts of, of, of power produced each. How we make power, um, I'm not going to go into this diagram, but it, it kind of shows you upstream, the water comes in the gates, it works through our facility, it goes through a turbine unit and the draft tube and out, exits out through the river, back to the river. Kind of what that looks like in real life, the, these are the turbine units. So we've got two of them. Each blade is eleven feet tall, so we're talking massive, um, infrastructure here. Here's the draft tubes in this photo here that they sit in. You can see there's this little opening here, that's the, the hatch that we access to get into those turbine units. So kind of, again, shows you the size of it all. What I find kind of neat is we, you can barely slide a tarp between this blade and that, and that draft tube. So that's how tight those tolerances are, just a kind of big, massive infrastructure with tight tolerances. And that's all to maximize the production of power. Some complications we, we just like to share, um, working at the, at the plant every day, anything you can carry on the cart can come out with you on that pathway. If you can't get it on the cart, um, or you forget a wrench, it's a long ways back across the river, especially in the middle of January. Also, any more major improvements that we're doing, um, this isn't like driving up to a site with mobilizing standard construction equipment. We need to mobilize a barge or we need to mobilize divers, right? So, so it's, it's a different scale which increases the availability, the time and the cost for us to do even the smallest of projects. I'm not going to go through all this, but, uh, we also have to go through a de-watering. So, you know, if you can kind of just imagine, we have to go through and to get on these components inside the plant. components inside the plant, we need to de-water. So we do that every five years, and it costs about a half a million dollars to do a de-watering. But really, that's when we get in and we can do our, we can do all our intricate work, we can expose the components, and that's our time to get in and do that. But the amount of pumping and staff time and dive team to set this all up, it's quite a project. So that kind of brings us to, that's a little bit of what the hydro plant is. But our approach to this study, we did believe that a comprehensive study of looking at our plant, just because it's an aging facility, it's long overdue for this asset. So that's where we stood in Public Works, is we need to take a deep dive in all things hydro. And so we programmed $100,000 in 2023 and got that approved in the budget. We want to switch to proactively managing the facility, and so that was our driver behind it. We also knew we needed to hire some expertise to get through this study. So LNS Electrical has been the main contractor doing all the components on the hydro plant, so great institutional knowledge to get them in in a study environment. Also, BAR Engineering has experts in the field of hydro, and so we felt that was the ideal to bring in on our hydro plant. So we did receive a proposal from them to develop, really what they call it in the field, is a preventative maintenance program, and that'll all come with justified costs, and it'll all be data-driven. The cost of the proposal was just under $47,000 to get in and run these failure scenarios and develop the preventative maintenance program for the study. We also knew for the study to be successful, we need to understand kind of all our inputs, you know, what's going, what are the costs, what's the revenue generation? We wanted to really understand how this hydro plant works and how it makes money for the city. So we're digging in on labor, on our capital improvement program, on insurance requirements. We're digging into all of our contract commitments. So, for example, we have an agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers. We lease the space or we rent the space. We don't own that section of the Lock and Dam. We lease it from the Corps of Engineers. We pay their power bill is how we do that. So there's some commitments there that we want to understand, the terms and what some of the language says. Corey, I just signed you up for some of that. We have a contract with Excel out to June 30th of 2033. That's who we sell our power to. So what opportunities are there to maximize revenue or understand revenue and can we go to the open market after that or before that? Wanted to dig into that. And then also, there's some limitations on revenue. Climate, you know, climate drives the head of the river and how we make power. There's regulation, inspections and mandatory improvements, and maintenance projects take us out of production and producing power. We also can sell renewable energy credits, or RECs, out on the open market, and we have to pay a broker to do that. So there's a lot involved there, and I just share that, those are the things we want to have very clearly identified for the council when we bring all of the potential preventative maintenance costs together with how this plant is functioning financially. So our desired outcomes, we really want to have this preventative maintenance program that we understand and we can buy into to encompass all the equipment onsite. We want to learn some best practices. I know we're doing a lot of them now, but there's more as we tap into the experts in the field that we can be considering. We want to look at this full cost-benefit analysis, you know, put all the numbers together. And then we want to have this comprehensive data in our final report so that we can make informed decisions in the future, at least recommendations to the council. So our schedule, next steps, after tonight, we're hoping to authorize LNS and BAR to complete the study. We are looking for city staff to provide all this cost information, and we've met already preliminary on some of this. But by the end of March, looking for the study to be completed in May. Present those findings to the Utilities Committee, and then ultimately, our recommendations would go to city council and get incorporated into the 2024 budget. At least we'd have the opportunity to move along that timeline. We may not be ready that quick, but that's the goal. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Any discussion, counsel? Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, your honor. Ryan, is part of this potentially looking at the de-watering process and the timing of that and the frequency of that? Because theoretically, you could get a 20% boost by going to six years or something, you know what I mean? Like something along those lines, or more efficient replacement parts or whatever it might be. I'm making things up because I have no idea what I'm talking about, other than the questions that I just posed to you and see what you say.
No, absolutely. And that's why it's defined as a preventative maintenance program. That's part of it. We're already doing that now, and we're on a five-year cycle from some of our past discussions, or hey, this plant does it this way, or, you know, we worked it out with finance that way. Is that the ideal timeframe? That's one of the main questions, right? That's a half a million dollar commitment. So we do want to talk about that. My concern is rather than that getting less frequent, it would get maybe more frequent. So to your point, yes, we would look at it. What are the best practices? Or what efficiencies, you know, can we realize? And that's why, those are the things that are open for discussion.
And that de-watering timeframe is during some of the peak production time, too, isn't that correct? Like, so you're losing some generation of power during that period of time as well, right? It's not just the expense of actually doing it, but that's the lost opportunity of revenue?
And that's correct. When we're de-watering, we're not making power, but we can identify as best we can of when to do those de-waterings at a lower production.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lund. Councilmember Pembel.
Ryan, the, let's see, these were put in in '85 to '87, correct? And they've not had any major work done to them, except when it was the flood? Is that correct?
Is that correct, Joe? I have Joe, I have a secret.
Yep, I see his head nodding over there, so. But, and secondly, we've never evaluated the condition and monitored, you know, what needs to be done when, and what's our potential for failure? We've never had one of those evaluations done, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. My concern is looking at it from a perspective of a piece of equipment, and you're, it's just like a car engine or something along those lines, without certain ongoing maintenance and knowing that that maintenance is due, and you're looking at something that could have a catastrophic failure and be very detrimental to the community, let alone to the lock and dam system right there. And that's kind of what I think is the importance of having this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pembel. Any other discussion, counsel? Okay, I would accept a motion then to authorize Public Works to enter a contract with LNS Electric for developing a preventative maintenance program for the hydro plant. Councilmember Pembel? Fox?
House.
House, sorry. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thank you, Ryan. All right, under Community Development, tonight we have annexation with best development property at Walden at Hastings, Trunk Highway 316 and Michael Avenue. And we are here tonight to remove from the table. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. So as the mayor pointed out, two actions before us tonight on a property that we've spent some time looking at, and that is this annexation of about 71, 72 acres down at Trunk Highway 316 and Michael Avenue. So officially before you tonight, we tabled action on this ordinance for annexation last spring and February. A little bit of history of what happened at that time. When we consider annexations, our practice is to have a development plan associated with it. What an annexation is, is the taking of land from the township and incorporating it into the city of Hastings itself. We do this not as something we seek out, but at the reaction of a developer that comes forward and looking at our comprehensive plan to see if this is an area that we had intended for growth and development. Both of those were true here. Last year, we were in a situation where we had a concept plan that came forward for 160 single-family lots, along with the annexation application. During the process of ordering the public hearing, and by the time we held the public hearing, that developer went away. And so the council at that time decided to hold a public hearing, close the public hearing at that time, table any action on the annexation itself until a new concept plan, new developer was to come forward. So we fast-forward a year on this one, and we have that now. We've got Land Equity Development, who has a concept plan for development. I'll go through that at this time, just a little bit here. The thing to be clear of tonight is what we're doing. What we're doing tonight is the annexation only. There are a number of different land use steps that would be necessary in order for this development to move forward. And I'll go through a few of those in a bit here. Tonight's action would be to approve the ordinance for annexation, which would extend the city boundaries. The land use underneath this would stay the same, would be agriculture. It would come back at a later date for us to consider different land use approvals. We would go through an environmental assessment worksheet, which would include environmental impacts of the site. This is something that's mandatory from state government to do. A key component of that is a traffic impact analysis, and the developer is committed to doing that regardless of the environmental assessment, but that is a piece that will be going on as we move forward on this. So you would have the annexation potentially tonight, environmental assessment, traffic studies that would come forward, and then different components of land use approvals. These components of land use approvals would come forward before the Planning Commission via a public hearing process with all the folks notified that have been in the past, and then to the city council for approval. So that's kind of the steps of where we're going tonight on this one here. So since this new concept plan came forward, we've had a couple of different opportunities to bring this concept forward to the public. We had a neighborhood meeting that the developer chaired in late January, about 35 people or so showing up to that. We had some concern from the neighborhood pertaining to traffic, impact on the park. Those were some of the major issues that came out of that one. We also had a planning committee of city council, which is Chair Fox, councilmembers Folch and Leifeld, that reviewed that on January 30th. Similar types of concerns, access to 316 and Michael, noise mitigation from that roadway, association, maintenance of items, parking, and then what would be happening with the Sand Cooley land in there. So those were the major topics of discussion. And then we had the Planning Commission review this last week on the 27th. They had similar concerns, looking at park amenities, mixture of housing types, and kind of the market of this development. So that's the review that we've gone forward. I will stress that this is a conceptual plan at this point. This is an idea brought forward by the developer, but it's an important idea for your consideration because the developer is bringing forward this concept plan, along with the annexation plan, in anticipation that the general concepts presented are things that the council will look favorably upon in the future. So if it's a situation that the city council looks at what is being proposed and goes, this just isn't happening here, this is the time to say, let's hold off on annexation. If the council believes that this concept plan, the density, the general layout is something that, yeah, I think we would look favorably upon this, or some information that we want to get more to make that final determination, but we see that this is something that we could perhaps approve in the future, then I would move forward. We recommend moving forward with that annexation. So what are we looking at for the concept plan at this point? This is the general development, and I know this is, there's a lot of stuff going on here, so I'm going to go through this a little bit. So we've got Highway 316 coming down here, Michael Avenue in about this location here. In this development, there's about 71 acres, but about 50-some acres here is developable. You can see all these lines over here, which represent the big grade difference that goes down to the Sand Cooley. The Sand Cooley area is protected as you go north towards the South Pines Development, and the developer is proposing to do similarly here. He's been in discussion with the DNR for a potential transfer property over to that, but the important part is there's not any development planned within this sensitive area. The intent is for that to be preserved in one fashion or another. So we're looking at the development on top. Development on top is in some different phases here, which I'll go through in a moment. Main access point comes off of Michael Avenue here. There's some extensive trails that go through it. Secondary access coming down here, a little bit further to the south, down Highway 316. About 450 units altogether in what's termed a lifecycle community. So when we're looking at the development itself, we got an area to the north here, which are going to be twin homes. These are going to be adjacent to the existing homes that are just to the north of us in the South Pines Development, and so this is something it would look like as far as the layout would go. The image to the south here is kind of a 3D virtual reality that the site designer, Rick Harrison Design Studios, has put together to kind of show what, how this would all function and what it would look like here. So it was a pretty cool thing to look at when we were going through this. And that was one of the things that we spent some time with the neighborhood during the meeting was, okay, we understand that we are going to be introducing new housing adjacent to your housing. It's been planned for that since before this housing subdivision in South Pines went up, but it's still a change from what's been there for the last 25 years. So one of the things that the developer has committed to is the creation of a 30-foot strip that would be burned in landscaping that would be between these properties over here and the areas to the north. So this is one component of it, would be the twin homes. As we move over, there's also another section here, which is townhomes here. Now, the townhomes would be what he's termed as rear-loading, which means if you look at the Schoolhouse Square development, for example, where you've got the houses that are along Ramsey Street that have the front and the porch, and then you kind of go behind them, and that's where the garages are that are adjacent to the senior housing facility. That's what's being designed here. So the front of these buildings would look like, you know, have a building front with no garage access, but there'd be a private road constructed down towards the back of these units, which you would park your cars. So you would, and you'd have access to the trail systems throughout there on the front of the structure, so to kind of create a nicer view for people out there. So that would be the plan for that type of portion of the site. Moving on here towards the middle, you have an active adult and assisted living section here. So this would be senior living in various densities and forms, and be planned for more of the center of the development. This could be a multi-story building of independent living or some sort of realm of assisted living within there. So that would be more towards the center of the site here. Now, this one here, I've got an old drawing, so it doesn't quite look like this here, but I'm going to go back, because I'll show you what it does look like. This would be in this area here, this is the apartment area. So there would be apartment that would be put down through here, altogether, I think it's about, whoops, 170 units altogether, nice amenities, nice overlook towards the preserve area here. And so that would be another portion of it that would be presented, and I'm going to make you dizzy and go through a few slides till we get to the single family. Single family would be coming in this section, it's called the Single Family Coved Home. There is nice amenities with trail, good views from the homes themselves, and that's what would be set up here. With this development and the 450 units that would be proposed as part of it, these could all be rental. This is, the plan of the developer at this point is to try to market this development as a force, as a new construction for leased community. Now, this is a new concept. We don't have anything like this now in Hastings. When you take a look throughout the Twin Cities region, there are some developments that are like this. There's been a focus, at least near our area, of single-family leased home sites. There's a 60-unit facility in Woodbury and other 60-unit facility in Inver Grove Heights. These are homes that are generally between 1,800 and 2,800 square feet, and the monthly lease rates for the single-family homes can be anywhere from, you know, $2,000 to $4,000. So these are, you know, expensive homes from a leasing standpoint, but there appears to be a market. homes from a leasing standpoint, but there appears to be a market. He'd also be looking at the components for the other townhome developments and twin homes potentially in there. The one thing that we looked at earlier on with this type of concept would be, okay, this is different for us. Could it be developed in one of two ways? Understand that you're seeking to sell this to different developers for this concept, but what would happen if you are not able to sell this as a full leased concept? I'm gonna move forward. That's making me dizzy. Here we go. And it would be set up in such a manner that different components could be owner-occupied, if that was the market in the future. So, we'd have that flexibility to move forward on that one. The one thing to keep in mind here, too, is that this area would be an association maintained development, regardless of whether it's owner-occupied or it is for lease, which means that the vast majority of the common open space that you see here is going to be that, open space for the development, maintained by a central entity and maintained to a certain development standard. We were concerned, looking at this, that, hey, if we're gonna have a predominance of rental units, and if these rental units are not association maintained, what is the overall quality of these, of the properties going to be? Because in some instances, you have multiple family areas, where they don't have this, where you've got varying degrees of maintenance and could cause issues over time. So, that would be one key aspect that we've shared with the developer and that he is committed to, and as we go down the road through development approvals and agreements is something that we would put into documents at that standpoint. So, that is generally what we're looking at here for the property itself. What you're asked to do tonight, council, is to take these, this ordinance amendment off the table and consider the adoption of the ordinance amendment. The ordinance amendment would extend the city boundaries to incorporate this property here. So, that would be the action tonight. It is something that needs a simple majority, so you are able to take action on that if you do desire. I do have the developer here, Jeff Richter, for Land Equity Development, if you have any specific questions for him, and I can stand for any questions at this time as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of questions. John, can you show, maybe on, I don't know if that's the best one, but can you show us where city roads are and where private roads are?
Sure.
So, you have an understanding of what we're gonna be responsible for?
In general, these would be the city roads here. This, and I think this.
Right.
These would be private here. This would be private, and this, I believe, is private. That might be on the edge, but...
The last one's public.
Last one's public. Okay. So, as we, as we move forward towards the plating approvals on this one, we would make that determination as far as what would be public, what would be private.
Thank you. And then, you know, I'll let other people talk for a second.
Thank you, Councilmember Lund. Councilmember House.
Thank you. I know there have been concerns brought about the congestion of Highway 316, and I know we are planning on a traffic study to be completed to determine the impacts of that. I would feel better about this, before moving on with the annexation of land, to have that study completed, just because I know that is a main concern for many of the residents in that area as well. Just a comment there. Also, I do have a few questions, though, of when the study would be completed by, if it does start, and then any of the environmental impacts, if that could be brought up beforehand as well before the annexation.
Commenting on the traffic study itself, we would require, the EAW process would require a traffic impact analysis be done, and I've talked specifically with the developer on that. He is committed to doing that. As far as the timeframe goes on that one, I would say in the coming months that that would be coming up on that one, 'cause it'd be something he'd want to get a determination on related to that. On the environmental assessment worksheet itself, maybe a few-month timeframe for him to put together that analysis, then we as staff would review that, make any questions and comments, and then take it through the public process on that one. The one thing about the environmental assessment process, though, it's kind of a chicken-and-egg scenario as far as the responsibilities. With the annexation itself, we, let me go back a little bit. With the environmental assessment worksheet, there, with the annexation happening now, we would be the governmental unit responsible for reviewing and implementing that environmental assessment. If we were to wait until the annexation was done, if we were to wait on the annexation until the traffic impact was done, that responsibility would fall then on to Marchand Township at this point, and I certainly don't want to burden the township residents in reviewing a property which ultimately will not be within their jurisdiction. It's kind of a chicken-and-egg scenario, 'cause I understand the need and the desire to have that information, and agree as well that if this traffic impact information comes back, and there are things that have come forward that are, whoa, I don't know if this isn't what we expected, that would lead to changes, and that's something that the developer, I believe, understands and would have to react to that. From the MINDOT review, they did, MINDOT did review a conceptual plan of this back in January. I was rereading the letter this afternoon. Nothing huge came out of that, more, hey, there's probably gonna be intersection improvements at Michael and 316. We want a better idea of what the, of what the traffic impact would be there. So, I'd, probably not the answer you'd want to hear, councilmember, but one of the reasons why we've held off on the EA, on the traffic study is so that we could, we could take that lead position on the environmental assessment worksheet at this point.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I know that lifecycle housing is a really important issue for our city, but yeah, I would push for us to try and do the traffic study before annexation of land, if possible.
Thank you. Councilmember House. Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of things. The homes on the top left there, am I reading it 24 feet wide? Are those...
The homes up here, councilmember?
Yeah.
Okay. And what were you, I missed that question, sorry.
I believe it says 24 feet wide. That seems awfully narrow. Is that what that is?
The minutes themselves? Let me go back here. There.
I was just trying to understand what those are.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, geez, I'm making everyone dizzy here. Uh, here we go. That's what I'm trying to do, seeing if I can, how much this'll pixelate on me if I come on up here. But yeah, I mean, these, that seems very narrow to me as well. I'd be surprised if it was that narrow. Jeff, you have any indication generally what you're looking at there?
Well, you have to remember that the front, where everyone will see is all housed over.
Displays that, John, it says, if you look at the...
Yeah, sorry.
...in front is, you know, like, this attached goal home.
Okay.
And the back is basically a private road and alley, if you will, just a park and gets a big garage and so on.
Okay, thanks. Okay. And then, timing of, obviously, market drives a lot of timing, right? But there's a lot of, lot of houses.
It is.
We've been in situations in the past where a development has been planned and agreed to, and then things change, and then new plans come out, and it's markedly different, and we're already kind of in a, we've already stepped into it, right? How do we know that this is going to be even similar to this whatsoever? What type of, I know we're talking annexation today, but, you know, what, you know, what type of... I guess I'm asking because this, the traffic study and things like that, you know, we've got a fair amount of senior living and whatnot, which does tend to have lower traffic rates, or at least off-peak traffic and things like that, where if we all of a sudden realize that, nope, it's a, it's a different housing type that goes in there, and it's a, you know, rush-hour traffic type of situation now, you know, that, that study is irrelevant at that point. So, that's, that's just kind of what I'm wondering. What kind of assurances do we have that these are going to be senior living build, you know, apartments right there in the middle and, and whatnot?
Yeah. The difficult question to answer on that one, as we move forward with the development of this concept plan, we're gonna go through many different steps. After the environmental assessment and the transportation analysis, we'll get to the overall development itself. And there may be, we may come forward with a concept plan that perhaps could change over time on that one, and any modifications to that concept plan would need to come back to the council. So, it may be a possibility that something similar to this is approved by the council, a portion of it is constructed, and perhaps there's a modification that is being asked for at that point. That'd be something that you may be asked to review in the future. It's difficult to look into a crystal ball to say, this'll all go through the way that it is. You take a look at, you know, various larger developments on this and, you know, how they've developed similarly, but maybe not quite the same as they were originally intended. I know it's maybe kind of a poor example, but from a, you take a look at something a little bit complex like Schoolhouse Square. When we originally came forward with that plan 20 years ago, we had visions of that with various units being in different locations, and a center apartment building that was a little bit different and some other housing that never came up with that. So, we approved that conceptual plan, development plan, I should say, and then we reviewed the different development aspects against it, and there was various changes that came forward with it. At the end of the day, I think it turned out to be a nice development and close to what came forward with the original vision on it, but the more complex you get into a project here, the more opportunity there's gonna be for some deviation. But I think the important aspect is, from the council's standpoint, is if you approve a plan of X, there's an obligation from the developer to do that, and if he's not unable, he requests a change from it, and you're not obligated to make that change. So, I think that's a key aspect.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks, John, and I appreciate that. This'll likely be multiple years in the making, so some of y'alls are on here only a couple of months, so you might be around a little longer, who knows? Just make sure that, you know, if this does go through, that we are keeping that in mind, you know, that we, we make certain commitments and agreements together, and of course, reasonable modifications need to be had based on current conditions and new knowledge and whatnot. So, it's not, you know, necessarily it has to be a rigid line, but it, you know, it can't become so much different that, you know, that it, you know, it is no longer what we had planned for, and then has downstream negative effects. The neighbors around, you know, have a certain expectation as well, let alone the city, so. Thanks, John.
Thanks, Councilmember Lund. Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll speak on behalf of the committee right now. We had a nice, robust conversation particularly about that, right? So, how can this development be envisioned to be lifecycle housing, something we really need in Hastings, but also can it be agile and change according to what the market says and what Hastings needs at the time, right? So, looking forward, that was certainly something the developer brought to the table and was able to speak to, and we really appreciate it in the committee. So, I appreciate those comments. Councilmember Lund, I want to just verify we had that conversation going as well, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Fox. Councilmember Pembel.
John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the last developer was talking about 160 single-family residences there, and in the comp plan layout that was projected out for the, I don't remember if it's the 2030 or 2040, but there would have to be, that's low-density area once it would come into the city, correct?
Correct.
So, there, no matter what happens going forward, there will be changes that'll have to be made to the comp plan, to amend the situation, to fit to whatever development gets in there. But when you're looking at this, and I just, on one sense, I just don't see the build-to-rent lifecycle concept, but generations younger than me, excuse me, but, you know, apparently that's the process, but looking at home development and a residence that you're gonna rent for $2,000 or $4,000, plus an HOA fee, I would imagine, less than that?
Yes.
Okay. But I'm thinking, you know, we're always looking for building, or not building, but for some growth. But expanded growth, and the only way I can believe this is ever gonna happen is, if it gets approved, is growth, this project would be four or five projects, really, to make it come to fruition, correct? And, but first off, my understanding that this is still on the table. It has not been brought back for, I've not heard any other fellow councilpeople say, "Let's take it off the table and bring it back for discussion." And I think that that's, you know, as we've talked about this, we've kind of maybe jumped ahead a little bit, and so I would like to make the motion to bring it from the table back for general discussion, so that whatever we decide on, we've already got the pretext laid out. Madam Mayor, that would be my motion.
Okay. Council, anyone want to second that? Councilmember Fox?
Okay, we do have a motion on the table with more discussion of new, new discussion? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. Okay, we're back into business. Okay, then we will start with the discussion again.
Okay. Yeah, so before you is the proposal for annexation tonight. Again, concept plan is brought forward to you as just that, a conceptual plan. No obligations to that for you tonight, an intention, indication of what the developer plans to develop, and so we would have more of that information presented in the future on that.
Okay. Thank you, John. And we do know that this, we've already had a public hearing on this, and it's not a public hearing tonight. However, we do know there's interested parties that would like to speak, and we will allow you to speak tonight. If you'd like to speak to us on this, you may step forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Steve Engstrom. I live at 17162 Red Wing Boulevard in Hastings. My property adjoins, our property adjoins this, this potential development, this land. I'm concerned about the City Council acting prematurely on the annexation of the best land development property. The main reasons of my concern are the traffic safety issues and the type of development being proposed. The concept plan has issues that are inca-battle with the existing infrastructure. We currently experience traffic jams at Vermillion Street and 316. MINDOT is not proposing improvements until 2027. Many roundabouts installed in 2021 do not seem to discourage truck traffic. The narrow lanes and the median, and the median prevent motorists from getting out of the way of emergency vehicles, and the roundabouts themselves are a little more than glorified speed bumps. When the annexation was tabled last year, the issue, at issue was 160-unit development. The current proposal is a 450-unit concept that has not been built in this region. I've spoken to employees and elected officials at the city, and they're concerned about the lack of housing, and in particular, senior housing. and in particular, senior housing. Let's review what has happened in the last year. The annexation concept was originally a low density and 160 units. The new annexation concept is a 450 medium density units. Construction is underway on 33rd Street Development for 211 apartments. Vermillion Acres is a 75 unit senior living facility under construction. There is approval for suite living, a 32 unit assisted living facility. All of these are on the south end of town where traffic improvements are not expected for 2027. I'm aware that there are several approvals prior, prior to construction of the best property. With the annexation being the first, but it's an important step that should be carefully considered.
Questions?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Councilmember House.
I did have a question for the developer as well. Um, we are, as a city, looking for affordable housing. Could you speak a little bit more on the pricing of what the housing, um, units would be around, ranging around for this as well? I know we're only speaking about annexation, but it is a general question I have.
Yes.
Sorry, I have such a soft voice. I'm going to get my horn out, but I think you were asking about the rents or the price, the values, maybe? Okay. Um, if I start, I guess, with the top left, the row houses that are backloaded. They're typically colonial. There'll be some, I use that term, but when I think of colonial, I think of red brick and Boston type of things, but value, our styles have changed. Those, if they're rentals, and I say if, because that's where the market is, but this process is so long that we go through and it's needed to go, you know, it needs to be that long. We don't know what it'll be in a year. It used to be in the 90s, nothing changed. And, uh, you know, you could go decades with, you know, rates just slowly going down. And now it's pandemics and it's interest rates doubling within six months. But I feel like I can kind of see the future, at least the next couple of years, and the rental demand is there. And so these units would be probably 1,700 to 2,000 square foot, two stories. Uh, they could be some single levels all, as well. Um, but they're probably rent somewhere around $1,600 a month, something like that. And then when we look at the duplexes, uh, now we're going to the upper middle right. That product, that, that type of home, um, has been done, that's project, so it's individual. Uh, you know, it's five neighborhoods. And so we can talk about it being different, but we've seen all these type of housing. It's no different. It's just that they're inclusive where they can be, you know, where you can have relatives that live right down the street, grandmas with grandkids. There's a project in Inver Grove Heights that has, uh, a preschool in the assisted living, which we would love to do that if we could make that work. But these, uh, twin homes, the values of the twin homes will be about 400 to 450,000 dollars, something like that. Um, so totally we're, you know, one duplex is about a million dollar property. Uh, the rents on those that they're getting in, the, the exact same house, we would spruce it up a little bit. They're nice, but, uh, there's a project in, uh, 24 units in St. Cloud, South St. Cloud, that immediately filled and has no vacancies. Um, there's one in St. Joseph, Minnesota, right, right next to St. Cloud, that same thing. They went with a bigger unit there than I, what I would do here. Um, but full right away. Um, trying to think, they have a couple of other projects in some other smaller cities, smaller than Hastings. And, you know, that's 2,300, $2,400. And so that's what I was thinking that this rent would be is about that too. Maybe it's higher, but, um, that's the range. There's a paradigm shift happening and I'm, I've been watching it now. It was the pandemic. I had time to think about these things as we all did, but I do a little bit more of it because I'm in the business. And, you know, generations are changing, as you said. Uh, the biggest generation was forever, you know, baby boomers. And that's not the case anymore. It's millennials are the biggest generation in history. So we've got two different generations, the two biggest that we've ever had in America, going through profound changes in their life. They're getting, the millennials are getting married and they're having children, so there's a housing change happening. But there's a housing crisis going on also. There's a lack of housing. And that's why values are rising that, at, at a pace that's not sustainable. So are rents, because it's supply and demand. And we have baby boomers who also are going through a housing change. You know, they don't want the stairs anymore. They don't need all the yard. They don't want to do the yard work. And millennials and baby boomers and myself alike, we don't like to do yard work. We don't want to do it anymore. And so it's kind of unusual to have two different demographics, so unusual, you know, so different, but yet wanting the same housing type. Because it'll be probably, um, any of these units will be probably 60 to 65% millennial and the others are baby boomers. Baby boomers want the freedom to be able to come and go, go down to Florida. Um, they don't want to do the yard work anymore. And that's one thing to say about this, this rental. The paradigm change also is, it's the first time in history where the, if you're looking at the same amount of money. So if you had a, um, a $400,000 duplex for sale, which we've had here in Hastings before, and some homeowners buying that and going to own that, and you compare that same house and that same income to the person that's renting here, this house is far, far nicer. It's got so many more amenities, because the difference is the landlord can depreciate the asset over time. And so if you're, if you're buying a duplex and your, your income would have to be somewhere around $120,000, that's in the $400,000 range. You're probably at your max as you're looking at kitchen upgrades, flooring upgrades. You're at 30% of your total income and there's just not room. You're not getting the tax advantage that a landlord is. And so it's about a $60,000 difference with the same amount of income and the same house that, you know, you'll have in flooring, you know, bathroom amenities. You just, these, uh, I have, um, a video I could show at some point of these houses in St. Cloud. And they just can't make it any nicer. It's a million dollar house inside. It's very nice and...
Yeah, those are some videos that I shared with you, uh, prior to the meeting.
Lovely, lovely. Um, then we have the, uh, the senior campus, which you all, everybody knows the senior housing is also in crisis. There's not enough of it and I think a lot of us that are going to be there at some point don't like what's out there now. That's not how we see ourselves living. So you're not only going to have a lack of what's out there, people are going to want something different. This is part of what that is. This, uh, area in the middle, uh, we have twin homes that are for rent, one level. Patio homes is what we call them, uh, in St. Cloud. And these are very nice as well, high ceilings. I mean, they can't make them any nicer. This project is modeled after the one that I saw in Lake Elmo called, um, The Fields of Arbor Lake. And it's just magnificent. It's just really, really, really nice. Um, there's, you know, you've got all the park amenities that are private, but right there. And, um, it's a way for people to be very social, but be separate, you know? And you're going to have your, no swimming pool in these, but it'll keep the association fees down. Um, but, um, you've got pickleball courts and you've got, uh, pit, you know, the, uh, fire pits and all those kind of nice things too. The assisted living, I think we all know what that is. Um, that's evolving too, you know? The menus are evolving, the choices of what, uh, what they are going to eat and how they order it is changing. So, um, this is a, an example of what that will be. We also have memory, we don't, memory care is part of this assisted living. And there may be also, uh, one of the, you have two quads in the middle is in yellow. The, the rectangles there. That could be, um, special needs possibly, because it's nice to be able to do a, a special needs project. There's only a limited market. These are fourplexes, each one. But to have the nursing staff right there to be able to check on these special needs is ideal. So that is the spot to do it. And we look forward to doing something new and exciting there, uh, for them. And then if we, oh, the apartments now, so rent on the patio homes, uh, to get back to your question. Uh, the value is 500 for sure, because you can't spend less than that. It's amazing number. I can't believe it, but it's where we're at for cost nowadays. Um, and the rents grow more there than what they do in the, the duplexes. Uh, Lake Elmo is a little higher rent, I'm, I'm thinking, but we're probably looking at rents there being around 2,500 to 3,000, depending on the size, you know, if it's, there's a, if, they don't need to be bigger than probably 1,500, 1,600 square foot, it's, but it's, sometimes they are, so. Those rent, those are fully rented. There's no vacancies there and they could use 1,000 more of them in Lake Elmo and they'd all be full. If we look at the, kind of the second half of it, it's all single family. And, uh, John is big on, you know, um, underpromising and over delivering. I take a lesson there too, because we, you know, it's easier to call them all rentals. But in three or five years, whenever we get to that, that could be for sale too. And, you know, none of us ju, you know, can decide what to build and force it on people. They're going to, they're the decision makers, you know, what will the market bear? Um, but if it's single family detached, you'll see those, uh, developments doing very well in Maple Grove, um, St. Michael. You mentioned two in, uh, Woodbury, Inver Grove Heights, um, Plymouth. So it's not really that new of a concept. The housing is spectacular. I mean, very nice. Well, the other thing that's different than a for sale project is that all the lawns are like golf courses, you know? Nobody, they're very nice. It's not, one doesn't do it and another one, everything's shoveled and taken care of. And if there's problem neighbors, you know, you want them to be a renter, not an owner. Because if somebody owns, they could go to jail, come back and, you know, they can't, they have a right to own that.
So Councilmember House, did that answer your, your question?
Oh, sorry. I apologize. Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, okay, so I did ask, and I'm, I'm not sure if I got clarity on, overall timing, if, if I could, um, obviously we don't know.
Yeah, timing.
Obviously, we don't know exactly what would happen, market dictates.
How I see it at least, I can, you know.
Your ideal, your ideal situation, what would be first?
Well, it was designed by Rick Harrison very carefully to make sure that we could get to most of the project, you know, without having to go through one and having vacant streets and a lot of expense. And so, um, this project is a next year project. It's a 2024 project summer, I would guess, by the time we're done. I would guess that, um, and they build, the thing about build to rent, it's all at once, so it's quick. It's not like you've, you've got to sell a house and then do another one. It's, you know, it's a process of six months and they're all full and gone. So I would think that this project will have, uh, a life of construction of about five years total, maybe six, you know? And if, and if something isn't sold, I'm not going to put roads in and, you know, those days are gone. So, um, it's hard to say, but for sure, I mean, my feeling I'm getting and the, the cause I'm taking, uh, it could, half of it could be gone in the next two years, the first half, you know, because such a need and, so little product out there, so that's my guess.
Thank you.
Oh, and if I may address, there is apartments, you know, being built, nice ones and good spots and good developers. But our process is so long here, by the time that we're building an apartment, it's two or three years down the road. So we have to start now if we're going to fill a need in two or three years. And so I understand what, there isn't a lot of good stuff happening, but it takes time, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Lund. So with that question, would you start on the furthest north part of this road going in by Michael and starting on that section and then moving forward that way?
Yeah, by necessity, that's it. Services are there and they'll come that way. Yep.
Any other questions, council? Councilmember Pembel.
So for clarity, what you're look, talking about is that chunk in the uh, upper right side or upper left side of the diagram there? And that segment would be a segment and the, the next segment to the east would be the next evolution, correct?
Yeah, I'd be, I, I think you'd be coming in here with Michael Avenue, uh, construction and with utilities. So you'd have this section and up here, I would imagine, is, is what you'd first be doing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
But the, well, I guess what I'm getting to is if those townhomes or whatever is being built in that corner, that's the first segment. And that could be once, if everything was just perfect, it would take you 24 months to get that complete?
There's, yeah, that is unusual, that's on both sides. So we could do one side first and then the other side as the market is.
Okay.
As you see, it's the same product or it could be differentiated to be one side if the market is see, uh, flat, no basement, not two story.
And Councilmember, what we'd be looking at this year is the entitlement process for this to go through the different steps, that would, that might not happen till November of this year. So I mean, when you're taking a look at anything, this construction season, no. And so I think it would, if the land use entitlements were to incur, everything's tied up by the end of '23. Uh, I think the developer will be looking at early '24 for construction of utilities and streets and then getting into the housing from there.
'25, something like that, whatever. Okay, um, and reverting back to the question about the uh, highway 60 or the highway 316 traffic flow. And that is the responsibility of the city to deal with the state or the developer to deal with the state?
Little, little bit of both on that. Anytime there is a subdivision that comes forward with a plat, which we're not to that point yet, but we're, we will be in the future. Then there is a review by MINDOT as to what the impact's going to be and necessary improvements to handle that. The initial comments were received back from MINDOT, which is based on this 450 unit concept plan, where that we anticipate Michael Avenue needing some improvements, uh, at a minimum turn lanes that come in there. But they wanted to see a, the traffic impact completed to determine if something further would be necessary there, you know, some sort of intersection control or something along that line. So MINDOT's had an opportunity to take a look at the conceptual plan on this. From my interpretation of their comments, there hasn't been any red flags that have come up. It looks pretty no.
Okay, that's kind of what I was getting to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pembel. One minute.
John, do you recall what the date was when we saw this annexation a year ago?
Yeah, we tabled it in February of '22. I think I've got that in my report. There was an initial hearing in January of last year and then, uh,
I'm sorry.
Yeah, February 7th is when we tabled it last year. And then we had a public hearing on January 18th.
Just, just helps if I get it right here.
Okay.
And so there's a hearing in, or not the hearing, but you said there was something in January?
Yes, what we did in January 18th, 2022, we held the public hearing at that point. At that time, we knew the development that was under contract was going away. That happened during the process of mailing the notices, which is a 30-day notice. So at that point, we held the public hearing because we notified folks. And then we tabled it for the next meeting, which was February 7th. At that meeting, we, we, we continued the public hearing, closed it that night, and then tabled the request for the annexation until a developer and conceptual plan come forward.
So, help me out, attorney. At this point, actually, what's before us tonight, removed from the table, is the first reading. So it's not final action on the annexation ordinance. It's...
Now, leave that to the attorney here.
Uh, Your Honor, members of the council, I said I was trying to...
Your Honor, members of the council, I said I was trying to clarify, just looking through the minutes of that meeting, is it looks like the action was tabled, but no official movement was taken on the annexation ordinance itself. And technically, by charter, even though it doesn't feel like a regular ordinance, because it's not in your city code, it is an ordinance, and all ordinances must be adopted with two readings. So this would be a first reading, and then it would come back before you for a final reading, I think.
Okay. So then... Take action at first reading. Okay, so then we need to take action as this being the first reading?
Correct.
Okay. No other discussion than counsel, accept a motion?
Some of...
Councilmember Lund?
May I?
Councilmember Fox? Yes?
I've got to bust you if I could.
Sure.
John, I wanted a clarification. You had mentioned that MinDOT had a review or some comment?
Mm-hmm.
On... Is that correct?
Correct.
On which concept plan was that?
Both. So they did do one on this concept plan in January of this year.
So they looked at both. Has... Were the comments in regard also to the 316 and 61 intersection?
I don't know how specific they got to 316 and 61 intersection pertaining to the review. They've mentioned that the 61 development project is underway, but I don't recall anything specific to that.
Thank you, John. Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is it possible to check in back with them and just confirm to the extent of which they looked for next...
As far as what?
With MinDOT.
As to what they looked at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To what extent the impact they were looking at.
Yeah, I'm sure...
Great to have.
Yeah, I mean, they mentioned within the letter that, you know, that this 61 project was ongoing on this one, so I've got to believe that that's part of their review.
Okay. Any other discussion, counsel? Okay, accepting the first reading motion. All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. So in two weeks, we'll have the second reading of the ordinance.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good catch, counselor. Okay. Fire and ambulance service contract with Hastings Rural Association. And for this item, we have an introduction by City Administrator Dan Rattichia. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you. As you know, we've had longstanding series of contracts with the rural area around us, the city of Vermillion, and the townships of Ravanna, Marchand, Ninger, Denmark, and Vermillion. Our most recent contract was set to expire at the end of 2022, December 31st. We did in late December negotiate a three-month extension, so we've been operating under that. Well, we continued negotiating a successor contract, which is before you tonight. I think the key factors that went into extended discussions with the rural association were a recognition that costs for the fire and ambulance service are just increasing extensively, partly a matter of adding staff, but also just a matter of timing. We happen to be having a number of trucks and capital of equipment coming up in quick succession. So increasing costs, outpacing what we've seen in the past. Also, the discussion that the contract should be based off of the total cost of running the department. So as an example, if we had insurance costs paid by the city in a different portion of the city budget, well, that property insurance, the workers' comp insurance, is still part of the cost of having the fire and ambulance department, and should be accounted for when looking at what does the service cost. We also had some very distinct discussion about spreading the cost of a capital item, particularly, you know, a truck or something expensive. So just for round math, if the new apparatus was $750,000, maybe we spread it over 10 years, and it's $75,000 per year. That does a couple of things. One, it helps reduce that immediate cost impact, but it also helps to make sure that the costs are consistent and predictable over time. You know, buy a truck this year, but not next year, and then something else the third year, it bounces up and down, where if we can smooth it out, it helps make that consistent. We also had a lot of discussion about fair share, some sort of proportional split to the cost, rather than just saying, here's the dollar amount, an X percent increase, how do we find something that's a fair allocation? And then, obviously, counsel back... When was it? Back in October, had a workshop discussing this, and you guys acknowledged that increasing costs and it... This goes with that phasing it in, or not the phasing it in, but that smoothing out the capital costs, but a matter of reasonable to phase in the cost increases for the rural association, instead of saying we need it all at once. So in balance, that's what you have before you, depending which side you look at. It is notable, significant increases in the financial contribution from the rural association for the next five years, '23 through '27. And with that, I can certainly stand for any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Counsel discussion. Councilmember Fox.
Dan, thank you for moving this forward. I know this is something that we've been talking about for a while, and we... I'm speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee, this is really helpful. We asked you to take care of this, and we're finally there, so thank you. With that, I'd like to move to approve the contract.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Fox. Second by Councilmember Pembel. No additional discussion, counsel. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Under administration, we have personal policy updates and additions. And Dan, you may continue.
This one, if I get the right page, we'll do the rural association twice and collect twice as much money.
As Mr. Ellers is leaving.
This one has some history. Last spring, we updated portions of our personnel policy, but there had been some discussion about other portions of the personnel policy that we weren't ready to act on at that time. Partly just we needed some discussion on remote work, but also a lot of it was more related to employee benefits, and we wanted to see how the compensation study played out in the budget process before we started proposing changes in benefits. But that's what we have before us here, and this did come through the Administration Committee, but I want to note that we did not have all the financial numbers when the Administration Committee saw this. So although they've made recommendations, maybe this changes some of their thoughts. Walk through briefly the several proposals, and then also note that if counsel's inclined in acting tonight, which is recommended, it might do it, all of it, or portions of it, depending on where your interest is. So you may do it in one or multiple motions. First, want to note Juneteenth, recognition of emancipation, June 19th. The state earlier this year passed a law saying this will be a recognized holiday effective 2024, next year. So it's coming, but the committee's thoughts were, we should do it sooner. If we can do it here in June of '23, let's go forward with it. Recognize that holidays are in our union contracts, we would need to, if counsel's inclined, we would need to bring some memorandums of understanding to them and negotiate and bring those for future action. I think that's fairly doable in the next couple of months. So the first one on the list is recognizing Juneteenth this year. Next is a remote work policy, which really is more of a hybrid schedule, and I want to run through a couple items in it. This deals with employees that might regularly be scheduled to work a couple days a week remotely from home, not the occasional, hey, the plumber's coming to replace the hot water heater, can I take the day to work from home to be there to let the contractor in? This is the, hey, every Tuesday and Wednesday, I'm working remotely. Would need the supervisor's approval. No employee, unless it were in ADA accommodation, no employee would be allowed to work entirely remote. It's expected it's hybrid. There is value to working in the office and cohesion with your coworkers, your teammates. If somebody's working remote, we still expect that they get work done. And actually, over the last couple of years, as we've sort of been doing this in-form, we've seen a lot of productivity and efficiency, so I don't have doubts about that, but it's an obvious expectation. We'd also want to make sure that the department has adequate coverage. We can't have all of the Finance Department outside the office at the same time. We want to make sure that there's somebody available in case we needed an in-person Important to define an employee's daily availability. Are they working eight to five, or are they working eight to noon, and then coming back from three to, whatever the math is, three to seven? Still the full day, but we need to make sure we're recognizing when they're available to contact or how to contact them with an instant message, or email, or phone calls, but being able to coordinate that just from a practical standpoint. The other piece, I think, to note on the remote work is if it's not working on an individual, we can stop it. This isn't a commitment. I think that it's worked well over the last couple of years, where we've had employees working remote, but if, for some reason, there was an issue or change in staffing needs, we could bring somebody back in. Next policy piece is sick leave donation. And really, I just want to emphasize, this is more of a matter of housekeeping. There's some clarity to our existing piece, as well as making it compliant with IRS regulations. One question's come up is it would be anonymous. So if somebody's donating sick leave, it's anonymous who's donating it, and actually even where, who it would go to. Next policy is safety boots. A number of our employees are required to have OSHA-compatible safety boots. Typically, it's our outdoor workers, the fire department, parks, public works. Our current policy reimburses full-time employees at $200 per year towards a pair of boots, and paid-on-call firefighters or part-time or seasonal employees, half of that, $100. And the proposal is to, recognizing costs of boots are going up, increase it from $200 to $250, and on the seasonal, part-time employees, keep it at half, so from 100 to 125. But the other change is the paid-on-call, although it might not be the steady shift there throughout the entire year, so recommend including them the same as the full-time employees at 250. In all, estimate that's about $13,000 more per year than what we currently spend, so there is a budget impact. Next policy is compensation time, and what's discussed here is for salaried employees, our exempt employees, and the thought being an hourly employee, when they work over 40 in a week, they have the option on that time sheet at either taking overtime, time and a half, or banking that time and a half as comp time that they might take as some paid leave later. But the salaried employees don't have that option, they just work the extra hours. We've had a rather unique, longstanding policy that we allow the salaried employees to track the comp time hours, those extra hours, and have some flexibility to take time off later. So if some of our employees here tonight are staying this evening, we've got a workshop tomorrow night on Highway 61, there's a committee meeting, commission meeting on Wednesday, hedger on Thursday, somebody might be working multiple evenings, some extra hours this week, and they take a three-day weekend a couple weeks later. I think that's great that we get that flexibility, but our people are busy, and those hours stack up. So although we have a cap at 120, it's not unusual for our salaried employees to be carrying a balance and maybe even hit that cap of 120, and still find that it's difficult to take time off. So the proposal here is to pay out December of each year, any of those salaried employees who are over 80, up to that 120, but over 80, to pay them down to 80 that December. It's not discretionary, they don't have a choice, it helps with some tax pieces to it, but essentially, anybody that's... Any salaried employee over 80 hours at that point would be paid down to the 80 mark. It's tough to say what that budgetary impact is. If you looked at it at a point in time today, those 20 employees that would be eligible, it's about a $17,000 hit. But if you took all 20 and maxed them out all the way to that cap, so it was the full amount of potential payout, it'd be $45,000. So certainly a budgetary impact. It could be pretty significant at $45,000 per year, this year's rates, but it is something that has come up multiple times over the past few years with salaried employees. I wouldn't be surprised to hear about it from hourly employees, at least when we get to negotiating new contracts later this year, but that's not before us tonight. Next on the list, vacation accrual. So new employee in the tables in your packet, new employees hired with a couple of weeks vacation per year, and then it isn't till year six that they see an increase, and then it starts to increase a day or so every year. And our thought is, particularly when employees might be happy feet and more likely to leave, they're not as settled into their positions here, we want to give them some extra incentive to stay here and invest in them while they're still new employees. So propose increasing that accrual rate so that they're gaining additional days vacation sooner, instead of waiting till year six. In the end, it still maxes out the same, but basically speeding up that accrual rate. Next policy, longevity. This is longstanding and intended to help keep employees on. So after employee's been here five years, we give them a 1% bump in pay, in addition to whatever else they might have had in their pay schedule, but they get a 1% increase. Another percent increase when they reach 10 years, and then again at 15 years. And the thought is, we'd love to have employees stay beyond 15 years, let's put a step at 20. So the proposal is adding another percentage at 20 years, based off of our current workforce. That would come out to about an $18,000 budget impact over the course of a full year. The last policy recommendation is paid family and parental leave. And one emphasizes this isn't just parental leave, it's also family leave under FMLA. Definitely questions and support for this. Definitely questions and support for this, but recognition that it's a topic being actively discussed up in St. Paul. So, it's proposed here really sort of a placeholder. We think this is important enough to do something now rather than waiting on the legislature, but wanting to undershoot and leave room so that if or when the legislature does something, we can pull this one back and follow the state's lead. But the proposal is 20 days, essentially four weeks, 20 days paid leave at 50%, with the balance being supplemented from their, whatever accrued leave they might have, vacation or sick or otherwise. Currently, our FMLA leave is zero. So, if you need to take time off for FMLA, yes, you can take up to 12 weeks and still come back to a job, but you're using entirely whatever you might have in comp time, sick time, vacation time. So, an incentive to making a payment there. Although we would lose that employee's service for those, those days, and it's possible that there could be some overtime with other employees helping cover, it really is a budget-neutral piece. It's just a matter of, is it coming from their existing sick leave balance, or is it something that we're paying? In either case, we'd be paying that employee during that timeframe. The last piece of the recommendation is a matter of, there's a lot here. Some of it's pretty complex, and, you know, we need to create a form, or we need to communicate changes, or update payroll systems. So, the thought is that if it gets voted tonight, none of these, other than the question of Juneteenth, none of these would be implemented till at least 90 days out. And none of them are retroactive. So, if you bought a pair of boots at 200 bucks early in the year, appreciate it, but next year, when you come back around, it'll be at 250. But we're not going to go try to chase down every, every detail during the year. There's a lot there. I can certainly take some questions.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Counsel discussion. Counselor member Fox.
I want to highlight that this is something we've been working on for a long time as well, and it's something that's incredibly vital to our organization, making, highlighting our staff and their well-being is, is really important to us as a council, and we are grateful for your work. So, thank you for putting forth all of these policy proposals. Kelly.
Kelly, thank you. Yes. Thank you, Counselor member Fox. Counselor member Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, we have. We did a study last year on salaries, or pay, I should say, not necessarily salaries, but pay, and made some pretty significant shifts in how we approach that. And we can continue to chase that one objective, but that's not the entirety of someone's employment. It's, there's, there's other aspects to it. So, yeah, there's financial implications on a couple of these, but pretty, many of them are not. And I think it's, it's good to take a holistic look at, at the employee experience and compensation as a bigger picture item than just the dollar amount on your check. So, overall, good, and I'm, I'm glad that we have a pretty decent laundry list here of, of things that should cover a lot of different people's needs. One thing I do want to point out, and I've brought this up in committee meetings in the past, you know, last year, so I'm not on this committee anymore, but the comp time I struggle with because in, in some ways, yeah, sure, give, I mean, giving what's, what's due to people that put in the extra time makes sense. But to what end? We cap it at 120, but I think there's, there's a bigger thing there that we need to be, you know, eyes on is, is, you know, you can keep piling things on a person, and, and then never give them that time back and just renumerate them. And at certain point in time, that's, I think that, that wears people too. And so, I don't necessarily take specific issue to the, the numbers here, but I guess I would say, let's try, let's, let's try not to hit that cap, you know? And, and it's not because of a financial necessarily reason, but can we find ways to not have to stack these time, this time up and not, not use it? You know, and that'll take some creative work, and that's on us too, right? Stop asking so much out of the same people or whatever, but I think, I just feel like that needs to be said, that we can't just put a thing in, in a policy and say, hey, you know what, we're gonna, you know, give you an extra 40 that you can, you know, work every year, and we'll, we'll just pay you, don't worry about it. Because those are 40 hours of someone's life that they're here and not somewhere else. And that does affect their, their viewpoint of this job too. So, enough said.
Thank you, Counselor member Lund. Counselor member House.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you on that, Counselor member Lund. And we did take a great deal of time in the committee to speak about these, and so, I just want to reiterate that I agree with you because the well-being of our staff is extremely important to all of us, because without them, I don't know where I would be right now. I would have too many questions, wouldn't have enough time to do any of it. So, I just want to reiterate that I do appreciate all of you as well.
Thank you, Counselor member House. And Counselor member Pembel.
You know, looking forward and reviewing these items, I was thinking to myself that, you know, we have to be very cognizant of the value of our staff. And part of that is treating them appropriately and providing a sense that there's a real worth there in their service. And sometimes I think it, it behooves the council to say, hey, thank you, you know? We appreciate what you do, but here are the things that, you know, addressing the needs that we can manage to make life a little bit better. And I hear, Trevor, what you're saying about the comp time issue, and maybe there's a sequence of a process that, that could be built so that we're not carrying folks that have such great numbers of comp time sitting on the books that maybe they're not being able to access in a timely manner when, when their family or their needs, you know, mean something more than just, here's an isolated day or two that it looks quiet in their schedule, take it off. You know, family time, I think, means a lot to all of us, but especially, we have to be cognizant of how our employees get through life, and we want to be able to say, yes, this process is sometimes difficult, but we're trying to make things a little easier, but it takes a constant review of the process and make sure we're on our toes to do what's best for the city, but yet also best what's for our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor member Pembel. And I'll just add to it too, you know, council's always best interest is for our staff, and I appreciate Dan and Kelly, John, our department heads, Ryan, who take the efforts and, and put these profiles together so we can see what is actually out there and what is deserving for you and your team members. So, with that, I think you can hear that you're appreciated, and we love that we can assist you in these simple ways, but acting on it is probably the best way that you can see that we appreciate all of you. So, counsel, I would accept an emotion. Counselor member House? And Counselor member Fox? Any new discussion, counsel? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Okay, we have to go backwards just a little bit. Can you explain? And counselor will explain.
Your Honor, members of the council, I am going to apologize right now. I should have known better that John knew exactly what he was doing.
Well, I didn't, I will step in and apologize because I should have identified this more clearer, because our, our council was doing what she needed to do, was to make sure that we weren't putting ourselves in someplace we weren't. So, this, this is not Corey's burden to carry. This is me not putting out what I should have identified correctly. So, I'll let you continue, counselor.
So, technically, the council held a first reading. It was in December 6th of 2021, which is why none of us remember. But you held a first reading, and it was passed. Then you ordered the public hearing. The public hearing was then held in January of 2022.
Yep, January 18.
And that's when this item was tabled. So, the second reading was never adopted. So, technically, this was your second reading tonight. So, what I'd, I'd like to ask you to do is make a motion to reconsider the annexation, because technically, you approved it on first reading, which you did not need to do because it already was. So, you need to make a motion to reconsider. All that will do is bring the original motion back up. So, then you can make a motion either to adopt it on second reading, if you are ready to do that, or as you were thinking about having it being a first reading and knowing it's going to come back to you in two weeks, potentially with a full council here, you could continue it to that meeting. I don't know that there's any harm in waiting two weeks, but those are the two options that I see before you. Or, of course, you could vote it down. But those, I guess, would be the three options. So, you can, first of all, make a motion to reconsider, and once that passes, then you can reconsider on second reading whether you want to pass it, continue it, or deny it. So, I apologize for the confusion that I caused tonight.
Okay. Thank you, counselor. Counselor member Lund.
Can I make a dual motion, or do we have to do it in sequence?
Do, do one first.
Okay. Make a motion to reconsider.
Okay. Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor of that motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. Okay, and that motion prevails.
Make a motion to continue.
Counselor member Lund makes a motion to continue.
Second.
And Counselor member Pembel seconds that motion. Additional new discussion, counsel? All those in favor of the motion to continue, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Okay.
So, just for clarification here, so we're, we're end up, we'll reconsider this coming up at the next council meeting on the 20th for action in the second reading. Is that correct, mayor and council? Okay, so.
Yep, we're good.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Counselors members, do you have any announcements? Okay, I have a few. Tomorrow, March 7th, Mendat will host an open house about the preliminary design options for Highway 61 project. Open house is 5 to 7. Presentation, I do think, is at 5:15. The City of Hastings Makers Market is a place for area marker, makers to sell their goods adjacent to our historical downtown and riverfront park. We welcome artists, makers, crafters, and small brands. There is no booth fee, but vendors are required to register. Please see the city website for details. The Friends of the Pleasant Library Used Book Sale will be March 23rd to the 26th. They will begin accepting donations Saturday, March 18th. Applications for 2023 Community Investment Fund Project proposals are open, with a few, with a first review of applications set for March 21st. The city created the CIF last year to encourage and support community partnerships and community-driven projects. Meetings Wednesday, March 8th, 6:00 PM, Arts and Culture Commission; Thursday, March 9th, 6:00 PM, HEDRA; Monday, March 13th, 7:00 PM, Planning Commission; Wednesday, March 15th, 6:00 PM, Parks and Rec Commission; 7:00 PM, Operations Committee; Thursday, March 16th, 6:30 PM, Public Safety Advisory Commission; Monday, March 20th, 5:30 PM, City Council Workshop, Rules of Decorum, and 7:00 PM, City Council Regular Meeting. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Counselor member Pembel and Counselor member House. No discussion. All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion.